Kong's meeting to order. To our opal, I'm Tim Straz, Secretary Ward is excused at Kamau. Here. John Mayer. Here. Rich Soret. Soret. And all here. No alternates, any public comments? See, no public comments, no correspondence. Is everybody headed off to review the minutes from November 9?
Yes.
The only error I made was John's last name. Is there any motion to accept the minutes with? I guess I'll be the motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
I'll second with the correction.
With the correction, a minor correction of Amber Meyer, his name.
Yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They have been accepted. Don't have the previous minutes decided now because I'm going to correct them, which is reasonable and probable. That is pretty good, huh? There will be no skill building tonight. All we're going to focus on is our warrant articles and the new business. So I have a copy of the warrant under this here. John Soret. So on the backside is what we've already approved as a group, which is amendment number one, the contiguous frontage, which will modify our zoning in Article 2a3c. So let's start off with amendment number two, class six roads. I believe we left off last time is that we were seeking feedback and input from fire and rescue and police from Wakefield, of which we haven't moved on since the last meeting. I think either doing, well, maybe I should rewind just real quick before we get into the meat of this and just talk about the timeline because we're coming up against it. So in my email out to you, to the team here, we have key deadlines we have to hit in order to get these articles to through public hearing and to the selectmen or to the, to be accepted. So January 7th is the last day we can post and publish for our first hearing. And then January 18th is the last day of all the first public hearing. And then we're allowed until February 1st to hold our last public hearing. And then on that next day, the final copy of any proposed or amended zoning ordinance has to be filed with town clerk on that day. So if we're going to continue to work on some of these amendments that we're going to look at tonight, we have to do it at a fairly quick pace. So that our next regularly scheduled meeting is January 11th. So we would have to have a public, if you have a public hearing on January 11th, we'll just have to have it posted before then. But we would have to get everything sorted out. So we kind of have only a couple of weeks to finalize these things, in my opinion, and get this posted, so.
So Mr. Chairman, can you just repeat the date that we have to have the public hearing by? Did you say January 8th?
January 18th.
18th.
Yes.
For the public hearing?
It's for the first public hearing, that's correct.
Okay.
So we have to have a hearing by the 18th, no matter what. And if there's a follow-up hearing that needs to happen, we have to leave it first.
And this has to go to the selectman next after we're done with it?
It says it goes to the town clerk's office.
Okay, so it was right to that point.
How much time do we need to post for the hearing on paper?
I thought it was two weeks. We just did this recently, right? Last year, I think, for the articles or something like that.
It's on the 4th?
January 4th.
So January 4th, we would have to make sure we got the posting in there for the public hearing.
On the Monday, isn't it too?
Yep. Well, that's a week, that's a week ahead of our regular meeting, if we want to have a regular meeting. Which I think would probably be wise. So let's say January 11th will be our public hearing, which is our next meeting.
So then we have to get it in the paper by the 28th. Is that right?
That's the second week in February. Yeah, 28th. Yes.
Paper only come out on Monday, if it comes out on Thursday.
That's true.
So it's going to be in the public's hands for two weeks, maybe a week before then.
Good point.
Unless it goes to Foster's.
The 21st.
Whatever the rules and procedures say. I think it specifies your rules and procedure, what papers you have to use.
Yep, the Grand State uses one of them.
Yeah, we could do that because in the interest of time, we're out of time. We have to go to Foster's, which has the, they publish them. And did you change your rules and procedures? I don't know what they are.
Yeah, Foster's Daily Democrat.
Grand State News.
I have the Grand State News.
Yep. Rules and procedures on posting for that. I didn't, I didn't think of that. It is on the, it's on page 12. Public notice of the hearing shall be given 10 or more days before the hearing, exclusive of the day of posting and the day of the meeting. Notice shall be posted on the Fulton Board, town website, and published in the newspapers. Full text of the subject of hearing need not be placed in the notice, but the notice shall give a clear description of the matter and state where the document will be reviewed. So for a hearing related to adoption of regulations to zoning ordinance, which is on page 13, the procedures for adoption notice are given in our say. Public notice for a hearing shall be given 10 or more days before the hearing. But exclusive of the day of the posting, the day of the meeting, but posting notice in two public places in town, town website, and published in any newspaper or general circulation in the town. So 10 days.
Which appendix you got, I got it.
I'm sorry.
I need the appendix, which shows the.
Yeah, I think I have the update, I thought. J, K, L, and M for the public hearing, the notification for the.
So it said at least 10 days?
Yes. So.
So it's for weeks, two, three weeks?
Yep.
The only date you're going to have the hearing, posted, posted now?
Yep. Yes, we can.
Yeah. Now, why do we only have the Foster's Daily Democrat in here? I could have sworn it was the Grand State News.
I think that was okay, Mr. Grand State. Is that it?
Okay.
Yep. So the 11th.
So should we bring all, there's one?
Well, it says that you can do it one, but we should probably just do both. Yeah, so it needs to go in the Christmas Eve, which is next Thursday edition. So we have to send it out by next Monday, I think it says on there, right? So it has to be received by the 21st for them to publish it in the Thursday edition. Okay, but are we going to have a problem since it's so close to Christmas?
I think the diary must have a public record.
Well, we'll have to find out. We can send it out this week, right?
I don't see why we can't send it out early.
Yeah, say it's going to be on January 11th.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll come back around at the end after discussing these. Oh, I don't know how it's going to get done. I just wanted to make sure we were aware of the timeline as we look at these so we can make decisions on whether on. So back to looking at the warrant articles. Amendment number two is our class six roads. We talked about meeting with Wakefield Fire Rescue and Police regarding this liability discussion.
And I believe it was either going to be in person or via email.
Right.
Was there anything sent back?
No, not at all. So we're kind of up against the wall on getting this formalized because we still have loose ends. We haven't gone through, I mean, this, we haven't submitted this to the lawyer for review to amend and clean up.
So who has the action item to do that? Or do we need, we need to make sure it's completely first before we send it to her?
Right.
Only is if we go back to, can I speak?
Yes, absolutely.
If you go back to the, the issue we had, getting some input from emergency, you know, the inspector and stuff that would be going to do inspections. If Wakefield is already doing this, because they have it in their, they have it in their ordinances, is it, is it your opinion that we don't need to ask them? Advice on it, if they already have it and they already do it right now? How comfortable does the rest of the board feel?
That was my thought, too. Because if they must be comfortable that they're already allowing it in their town, or they, I mean, they allow it.
So have you, has everybody reviewed what we have here currently? Is this something that we want to pass along to the lawyer as is and have her take a look and give us the formalized version to review?
The only thing I didn't see in here that I thought we talked about was the constructing or them making the road so it was approved by the town or something like that. I think we talked about.
Well, we talked about that it would maintain a class six road so the town would not adopt the road at all.
Right, right. Okay, I'm just, when I was reviewing through it, I remember we talked about that.
Yes.
I didn't recall the specifics of it.
It was my understanding, if I may, that the, when the inspection occurs, part of the road is part of the inspection. Did I not hear that correctly?
I don't recall that.
Does anybody else hear that? That the, that the inspector would be, half of what he's going to be inspecting would be the access to the property?
Oh.
Yeah, okay.
So what's the feeling on this? Do we want to send it along or do we want to amend it some more before we send it?
We could send it minus any detail we may want from the inspection. And any other, what, what is actually clear that she would be looking at? And what would she have to?
So everything that we have below, the first paragraph is what she composed from our original discussion and then we added everything underneath. Or we had everything underneath. But we've amended that quite a bit since we originally received it. So it really needs another look because, you know, we, we added excluding class five summer roads. Roads must, you know, which originate from Brookfield, the road.
We're coming a little close.
Yeah, so.
Just to say this, even if we meet again next week. Well, we can meet again, you know, anytime from now until, I mean, if we have to.
Yes, I think we would have to meet, have another meeting to review what was sent back.
But we're going to need, we only need 24 hours in advance for our meetings. So, I mean, it would seem like we're going to have to, we're going to have to ask Wakefield. I'm comfortable with it because they already do it, but we're kind of going way fast here because we're, you know, we just have to make sure that, that Wakefield, that we're clear about what Wakefield has to do.
So the other option is that we don't include this.
That we don't include what?
Yeah, we don't, we don't include this amendment into our proposed warrant articles.
Well, would that later take me next year?
Yes.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we keep, keep working on it, schedule another meeting, get as much, as much as we can? Like, don't fall off yet, just see if we can get to the point where we're comfortable with submitting it. And if we don't make it, then we can decide another day. I mean, most of the board is not here.
Well, one member is here.
That's, that's a lot of people.
I would, I, I don't disagree with you there. I think at the end of this meeting, I want to be able to take these three, four amendments that we're working on and have them go to the lawyer for review so that when we meet next, we can discuss them and either thumbs up, thumbs down on them and then move, and then, you know, get our public hearing put together. So I think, yes, we can continue to work on this, but it has to be done pretty quick here because I think we're going to need to meet in the next week or two in order to solidify this. But it needs, somebody's going to have to get in touch with Wakefield and ask the questions.
I think in the spirit of accuracy and completeness in the timeframe, that I would, I'd make a motion that we move amendment two to next year.
30 seconds?
Just keep in mind that there's no second to this.
Who, who, there's no second? Yeah. A second, then. Any discussion?
Yes. I think since it seems to be the consensus of the board that we're going a little too fast, that's the impression I get, that I would be in favor of moving it to next year since we're in board and I think we should work together. And if everybody feels we're going too fast, then we shouldn't rush the process.
Well, any thoughts?
So with regard to the speaking with the fire department, what specifically are we looking for? Did you send them an email or?
No, I think what the discussion is, is that we're asking, we're asking about liability here, right? If the fire, rescue, and police cannot get to the residents on the road, then what problem does that create and who's on the hook for it, right? Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's exactly what it was. For me personally, it was the due diligence of making sure that Brookfield is protected in case there is any kind of liability issue. And I personally felt better if I had somebody from Wakefield explain their process and any liability questions they may have, they may have, and what do they have in place to protect them. And we didn't have that information yet. Now, if we had it during this meeting, we could have moved forward, but we don't have it. So that was the only thing, it was that liability certification.
And another concern was, in a lawsuit, if there was ever some tragedy happened, it's going to fall back on the ability to pay and it's going to go to the town.
Right.
Recalls of what's written, but that's how they're litigating. So just to be sure, this is, it's a big one and it's a, it's a big change in what we've normally done for a long time, and it is moving really fast. I don't feel like we have a handle on it.
Yeah.
And I would also, I'm not usually the type of person that brings up COVID-19 every five minutes, but, you know, we're in the middle of a point where this is a change and people don't really feel comfortable coming out. And even if we had a public hearing, I think still people would be.
Blue show.
They may not. And, you know, I wanted to tell the governor not to do, to somehow put an executive order in that this, things like this could not be done during that amendment because I'm already having trouble accessing public meetings. So that's another reason why I would be more favorable to moving this to next year because then it would be more of an open process. We don't even know how town meeting is going to occur. So that's another reason to move it.
I think we're in a position to vote that, right?
Does any more comments?
No. No. So all those in favor of moving amendment number two, class six roads, to 2021 review? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Amendment number three, our building code update. So this is update article 2a3b, who read? Dwellings, one, no more than one dwelling shall be allowed on any existing or newly subdivided lot regardless of the size of a lot. And two, main building to have a foundation constructed with a minimum four-foot frost wall of eight-inch minimum thickness. Garage outbuildings and additions may have a monolithic slab if blank square feet in size.
Will have a monolithic, actually.
Will.
Will have a monolithic slab if size above, 24 by 24 and above. Typical large garage. Anything smaller than 24 by 24 can't go like grass slab or skids or any other typical way of putting in a shed or something like that.
Years. So 576 square feet.
Yep.
So garage outbuildings and additions will have a monolithic slab if bigger than 576 square feet?
If measures 576 square feet and above or greater.
Okay. So main building have a foundation constructed with a minimum four-foot frost wall of eight-inch minimum thickness. Garage outbuildings and additions will have a monolithic slab if measures greater than 576 square feet in size.
So, so would you say that if I put a barn? If measures 576 or greater. So I put. The way you worded it, 576 would not need a monolithic. So I build a barn and I can have a dirt floor? For six, right, I want a barn. Yep. And I need to go on a living floor, but I just want a dirt floor.
Yep.
Can't have it.
Pole barn.
I don't want a barn, I got a pole barn, right? I just want a barn. And I think the way it's written, I have to have a concrete floor.
Yes.
Going to fail.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is a barn a dwelling? A dwelling is where you dwell. So I don't think, does a barn fall into the same category as a home?
Absolutely, we're talking about it out though.
Yep.
Yeah, if you sit, if you look away or read, a barn would fall into a place where you'd have to put a monolithic slab. Or a barn would, well, you wouldn't do a slab if you're doing a barn, it would be a wood floor. It would sit, right, I see what you're saying, yeah.
It could be a dirt floor, it could be a.
Right, but.
Wood floor, it could be a.
Right, a barn would fall into that where you would have to put in the frost wall, but not the, not the slab.
Now, they do, there's a pole barns where they dig out four feet, put the poles right in the ground, build the size of a barn and have no floor. We could both exclude the barns.
I was going to say, is there?
This is getting confusing, right? The idea was a frost wall on dwelling, right?
Right, that's what I thought.
So if it's getting confusing, I mean, we could, we could just scrap that part. Park was clear, you want a frost will dwelling.
Right.
That's clear.
Yeah.
Then it is confusing with the word. So let's, let's leave it right there then. That was, that was the beginning spirit of this whole thing.
So if I can, Mr.?
Yes.
I'm just imagining.
This is on video.
Yeah, the garage outbuildings and additions may, may.
Or will.
Well, it says may here.
He said the changes to law, that rules of law.
I don't agree with that. I don't think it should, I don't think it should be, well, maybe.
Well, if you say may, then you can exclude, farms could be the. But may also says it's not required, so.
Yeah, so we could strike the last sentence. We've got a beat over after.
Yeah, I mean, I think for the most part that, you know, obviously with the House, they're going to want to do that type of thing, but with like a garage or something like that, like. So let's say you have a, you're doing a detached garage. I mean, I would think that any same contractor would want you to put in, you know, a four-foot frost wall if you're building a garage, you know. frost wall if you're building a garage, you know? It might be like a little bit different for barns and stuff like that. So I think, you know, removing that last part of the sentence would solve the problem of then.
Can you be more specific about what last part of the sentence you want to remove?
The garage.
Garage through size.
Yeah.
Cause the way that's written, like he said, if you did a barn, you'd have to put a monolithic slab in a barn.
Yeah. Strike it?
Yes.
Okay. So let me read back to everyone what we have. Dwellings, the number one is stripped from our current zoning. Two, main building to have a foundation constructed with a minimum four-foot frost wall of eight-inch minimum thickness. Go ahead. Yes?
What was the first one? Did it go change, you said the first one?
Yes, so currently B has no more than one dwelling shall be allowed on any existing or newly subdivided lot regardless of the lot size.
And that's not changing.
That's not changing, that's same, same, that's becoming number one and then number two will be the main building.
Why would you? I'm just being picky. You wouldn't bring up number one, right? You wouldn't mention that because that implies people are voting on that.
Well, we have to change the formatting.
You're, you're asking people if they're going to vote on that type of law? They can, they can say no to that, right?
Yep.
Yes, that's a good point.
So why put it out there? I say, why put it out there? You don't want to vote on it.
So let me ask, cause I don't know, how do you amend zoning with another item? I mean, we're just changing the formatting by adding a second rule.
Right.
So, so do you say we're?
Just after the paragraph.
Yep.
We would add the main building to have foundation, da-da-da-da, that's, that's the sentence. So the lawyer, do you approve changes, change to, I'll put my glasses back on, article two, to read? Main building.
Gotcha. Okay. So what I'll do is I'll rewrite this, I'll say update article two, A, three, B, to include and then I'll get rid of number one and I'll just, I'll just supply number two. Thank you.
And that stands alone as a paragraph.
Okay, good, thank you. I needed help there, appreciate it. So it?
You got it.
Okay, so we will submit this, this one to the lawyer as written then?
Yes.
Okay. Number four, which is our rec. one. So update article two, B, five, to read recreational lot requirements. We're going to remove, we're going to strike everything and just have a recreational lot cannot be subdivided. That was from our last meeting's discussion.
Yeah, that puts it back the way it originally was.
We used to be able to subdivide red lots, two acre lot. That's the way it was, you know, that's what we used to have, two acre, you could take a red lot, make it two acres. Now it's like you can't, we can't subdivide.
Didn't say anything about subdividing.
That's right.
Red lots.
That's right.
Would have been treated as any other lot.
That's right. See, we're going to two acre lot.
So we don't have to, we don't have to say that they can divide.
Well, no, I think, my point is, it's not going to get back to what it was, the restriction is you can't subdivide. That's what I think we talked about this morning, that's what you want. That, that's fine, that's, that's what we want.
So essentially it's saying that lots currently in rec. one, of which there's one, nothing can change.
That's what it will say.
So that means that because we were eliminating information on structure, right, no structure or part shall be placed within forty feet of the side and rear lot lines. So we're going to eliminate that. So if somebody wants to build a rec. one lot, what's their options?
Can't take it to somebody.
Well, on one. Right.
On one.
But if they want to build another structure on the site.
Other structure below.
They can subdivide the structure if it's below the line.
Okay.
Correct.
But we're going to take out the language that tells them how close they can build a structure to the lot line.
What's that about?
We have three items. The first one is A, the minimum lot size permitted shall be ten acres. B, the lot width at the right of way shall be not less than 250 feet and the lot depth shall be not less than 200 feet. Frontage on across six road does not meet the frontage requirements for recreational lot. And C, no structure or part thereof shall be placed within forty feet of the side and rear lot lines or within fifty feet of the edge of any right of way or within seventy-five feet of any pond, lake, stream, water course, marsh or seasonally wet area.
That's typical of any lot.
Right.
So it stays.
So maybe what this needs to be is that five A gets amended from the, or gets replaced from lot size of ten acres to cannot be subdivided.
Right.
And then we leave everything else.
Right.
Now, when do we get a chance to vote on this stuff? Are we going to vote as a board?
Yes, so.
Are we doing it now or after the?
No, do you want to vote on the final, what we're going to present to the public?
Just making sure.
Yes, we're not voting, no. Is that a test?
I was just making sure.
Kind of felt like a test. Chairman test. Okay, are we all set with rec. one?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a, another one that Rick brought up to the earlier that we did, we did discuss earlier, but I failed to add, which is.
I don't know.
Which would be. Mending article two, RA one, I'm going to, we're going to, let me write it out real quick. So article two, A, three.
B.
Was it D?
B.
D? Uh, no. Oh, I'm sorry. It's not three, it's one A. Two, one. One A. So it's permit uses on the very first page, number one, page one. You're in the zoning. So it says residential agricultural zone, RA one, permitted uses. A, farms and single-family dwellings with accessory buildings incidental thereto. Every dwelling shall have a minimum ground floor area of 864 square feet outside measurement. Fortunate steps or ground level terraces are not considered part of the dwelling for the purposes of this section. So the amendment would be to change the minimum ground floor area of 864 square feet to.
One thousand.
One thousand.
And why are we doing this? And who offered the amendment and why are we doing it? Just curious.
Well, maybe, so the, the dwelling sizes are consonant with what's built in the area.
Yes.
So if somebody wants to buy, wants to build a house that they can afford to live in, they have to make it a thousand square feet?
Yes.
That's your, what you're saying?
Yes. That's 136 more square feet.
Is that a motion?
No, I just have a bad feeling.
Did you remember this? We discussed this last time, didn't we?
Yep.
Yes.
With the condition of the economy that's going to come, that's coming down the pipe, I don't know if we should be limiting the amount of floor space that people should, would be able to build in this town, not this time. I would think at this point we would be lowering it, probably most likely not to tiny house proportions because state wall would have to be changed, but 864 is, you know, either leave it at 864, bring it back, bring it down. That's just my opinion.
I think one thousand feet is a good number and that was, that's what it was previous. Somewhere along the line, I'd lower it to 864. So I propose to just bring it up to a thousand.
Well, if, okay, should we actually create a motion to do the changes? That way it's on record who voted which way.
Yes.
I think that would be a fair way to tell you.
Correct.
So I would, I would move your motion first to change this to a thousand for the article two districts, number A. I would, I would make the motion for it and we vote on it.
Right.
And then.
So before you do that. Yeah. What, so where did that, that eight sixty-four number come from? I mean, I'm assuming that's a certain footprint. So that wasn't?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure that out actually. So it'd be eighteen by forty-eight.
Okay.
So that would be a double wide, right?
Try thirty-two by, thirty-two by twenty-four.
Well, eighteen by forty-eight would be a double wide trailer, right?
Yeah. I don't know how wide a double wide trailer is.
But I'm just, I'm just figuring. But what do you, thirty-four by six eighty, thirty-four by twenty-six eighty or twenty-four is eight sixteen.
Thirty-two by twenty-four is eight sixteen.
Well, no, thirty-two by twenty-four is seven sixty-eight.
And what's that number?
Eight sixty-four.
Thirty-four by twenty-four?
Eight sixteen.
Can I have a?
Thirty-six, twenty-four. One of these is going to come up to that number, that's why I keep asking.
Bingo.
Thirty-six, twenty-four.
Thirty-six, twenty-four. I'll do forty-two, twenty-four.
That's one thousand feet.
Yeah, six feet of that house.
What we should be doing is, we should be making the motion and then under discussion, talking about all this stuff, it's all nice and neat, having the discussion within the motion and then we complete it and then we vote on it.
I vote that we change the eight sixty-four to one thousand in article R.
Article two, A, one A.
Article two, A, one A.
Second discussion.
Yes, I believe it should be either reduced or left the way it is. I have no idea what, what started this and also to me personally, this is restrictive zoning. This is blocking out a possible class of people that you don't want in town. And people have been challenging this throughout the state. And you keep doing this, what you're doing is you're telling that certain people of certain incomes cannot come into Brookfield. So that's, that's my opinion on it. The only thing I don't understand is if I, if we vote on this, can I make another motion? I guess that's what our motion passes. Never mind.
Okay.
So we're at changing into what?
One thousand.
I mean, the eight sixty-four, there's a lot of houses that could fall into that category and then, I mean, you know, small ranch would be, I don't know, normal ranches would go out, I mean, if you're at, I don't know.
Our cave.
Our cave, yeah, I mean, cave is typically twenty-four by thirty-six, which is that number.
You know, the other thing that in, instead of doing the footprint size to make the thousand square feet or above the entire dwelling a thousand square feet, so that would allow a smaller house on the second floor.
I'm still baffled about why it's being changed.
I don't have a problem with the number personally.
With the eight sixty-four?
Yeah, with the eight sixty-four.
Rick, do you have any more comments on that, just before we vote?
No, no, I didn't recall it.
I made my piece, I'm done.
Okay, so all those in favor of amending two, A, one, A to one thousand square feet? Say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Nay.
So that one does not go. All right, so that concludes our look at amendments. So we have two that just have to be typed up, of which I can do tomorrow morning and pass it along, Rick.
Have a three or four, yeah.
Yep, three or four to have the lawyer look at and then, let's see, today's Monday, right?
Yep.
So do we want to try to meet next Monday to?
Twenty-first.
Look at the results? That should be enough time, do you think?
Yep.
And then that, so what would be decided? We would have to have our, this is twenty-first, work a lot for people, I don't mean to jump ahead there, but.
What are you asking?
To have a meeting to review our amendments, finalized amendments potentially.
I don't want to read them that night.
Twenty-first?
Twenty-first.
Okay. Rick, you're okay, we're doing it first. Good. So the next order of business will be to get our public hearing scheduled with the newspapers. Does anybody want to volunteer to?
I hate volunteering someone else, but.
I'm going to volunteer.
Terry Ward did that before and.
Yes.
I hate to volunteer somebody else to hear.
We seem to be doing that with him, volunteering for things.
No, he's the one that updated the contact information and.
So why don't I do this? I will write an email tomorrow to the group asking for somebody to sort this out and I'll suggest to Terry that since he's scheduled on the last one, if he could take that on and we'll vote from there with the intent of this week we'll get it sent.
Just doing a public posting?
Yes.
I wouldn't even know what to begin with.
Is that fair?
That's a plan.
Well, we had like, Terry and I went back and forth too with the, the link on it.
Okay.
So we'll.
All those ones, the toughest part is you have to put a synopsis.
That's, that's what I worked with Terry on last time.
Yes, so.
All of these only were, that's, that's the hard part.
So we don't have to spell out the, each one.
But give enough information so we know what the discussion is.
Yes, so I will write that in the email as our, as a explanation and we can tweak it if need be. I'll just express that town, the planning board will be needing to review news or, uh, changes to the zoning ordinance, and what's that?
Being officially to public hearing.
Yes.
Use the right words, right? Public hearing to review the proposed zoning, I have that.
Yep.
And where are you gonna have it?
Grand State News, Foster's. Oh, we're not in here, potentially.
How are we gonna do that, cycle people in and out is enough that...
All I have to do is zoom in on the door.
What limit did this likely put on the building, on this room?
We think we can get ten in here.
Okay.
Get more on the other side.
So we have the townhouse?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm thinking about our hearing. You could start it here, and if more people show, you can take the floor.
That's what, that's what I, well, it's the same address, right?
Yep, we're moving to the next floor, so they're here, you get twenty people, we're going next floor.
Okay.
You don't have to post that, you just...
Yep.
Just take the lane.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. So on that note, old business, that would be in January, which, uh, number of comments?
Number of comments, I, the books have been paid for.
Yep.
Just, um, last Tuesday.
Okay.
It's the last Tuesday? Yeah, last Tuesday, Congress was basically fast.
Paying again?
What's that? So, the books are ordered, so we'll have our books from this year, so I've got that situated. Remember, a few times, few years, we, uh, didn't order them on time, and they can get paid.
Yep.
We streamlined that, so that's good.
Good to know, thank you.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Excellent.
And if, my final number comment is, there are two pieces of legislation coming through, um, next session in regards to tiny houses. Which is gonna be similar to how the accessory dwelling unit legislation was. Which will may clarify, you know, how and, you know, the safety issues, the fire apparatus entrance, egress, everything. So, that was another reason why not to change this yet, because they're trying to address that there is a huge number of people that want to be able to build smaller dwellings to live in because of affordability. And, um, there's a lack of affordable housing, and that would help, so I just wanted to make sure you knew about that.
Thank you.
Is there a specific place, like in the country, that has already set up zoning for this, for those type of things, like?
There's one in Wells. It's like a little tiny house, kind of enclave in the state, yeah.
There are plenty of towns in there that don't even have a zoning, so lock yourself up.
Yeah. So basically just move. Yeah.
That would be a good discussion point for next year.
Yep.
Do you wanna part of that area out, wherever that area is? Right? It's always not my backyard, that's the problem.
I don't know.
Any other comments?
Yeah.
John?
Okay.
So, the one in January, we're gonna move on to the towers, the...
Yes, yep, January, yep. After the public hearing, we'll, we'll get back to our good business.
That one, and this other one?
Yep.
Okay, those are the one, other than changing the, the master plan, that's what we're...
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep, so to clarify, in January, we can start scheduling some consults and stuff?
Yes.
For people for the tower?
Yep. Yes. Rick?
Oh, we had an applicant for administrative assistant for planning board slash zoning. And that was passed on to...
Yes, that was gonna be my number of comments.
Okay.
I was going to say, yes, we've received, uh, information on a respective candidate, and I was going to get in touch with her and person. And, uh, I just wanna let the, that's all right, with the board, we'll...
Yeah, that's what we needed.
Are we gonna set up an interview with this, of the individual?
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
I know you'd like to be involved in that.
Sure. Should the whole board be involved in, or would that need to happen?
Just...
Yeah.
No, doesn't matter, I mean... But I was, the chairman sees fit.
It's up to you.
Thanks, Nick. So I'm gonna reach out to her this weekend, or him, and then we'll, I'll get back and we'll plan a meeting. That's all I have. Adjourned, seven forty-nine.